Sixteenth twenty twenty five council meeting to order. I met with council members at five P M in the sixth floor conference room for a briefing to discuss tonight's agenda. At five thirty, we moved here to the first four chambers to conduct the council meeting in person. And because we encourage community involvement, we invite the public to join us in person or participate via a remote option through Zoom or view on B C A. For anyone who's attending in person and plans to comment tonight, we ask that you please punch your name clearly on the sign in sheet so that your name can be included in the meeting record. And for more information, please refer to the Public Recognition and Public Comment Process handout, which is in the back of the room along with the sign in sheet. Uh, joining us tonight remotely will be Councilmember Fry. Is she online today? Okay, thank you. And with that, I'm going to turn over the mayor for the mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor.
All right. Good evening, President Younger, members of the council. Good to see you. Uh, good to see everybody in the audience tonight. So a couple of slides. All right, wildfire season is here. And so this is information that we distribute on an annual basis when it becomes, uh, you know, when the, the, the conditions are such. And so just so you'll see, this is, um, we have four hundred residents in resident, uh, in, uh, businesses and near neighborhoods and of course residents themselves adjacent to the watershed property. And another five hundred near the Anderson Creek, uh, well field. And so they're going to get this information. It's basically how to protect yourself, your home, your property, how to report. Um, you know, immersion conditions, how to be aware of situations that are, you know, coming up and just, um, you know, be, be a good steward. Uh, not only for themselves, but for the important watershed um, that does so much for all of us in our community. So this is just a snapshot. Of course, people can reach out, uh, to the Public Works Department or to me to get more information uh, on these pamphlets and what we're sharing with the community. Next slide. All right. The, um, the ongoing cleanup of Kitsap Lake continues. And so as we, as you can see up there, the weed harvesting uh, scheduled, uh, by the end of this week to continue through August. Um, Utrazorb, uh, G treatment is scheduled following the weed harvest. And this is, uh, done to, um, you know, for the phosphorus, it's to add phosphorus to manage water quality. And actually treating for phosphorus, the Utrazorb treats for phosphorus and it of course, controls the algae blooms within the lake. The algae bloom is what causes the problems. The, um, when it dies, it decays. Um, you know, creates, uh, when it more nutrients, obviously, just like fertilizer, which adds to the nutrients in the lake that creates the actual toxic weed that shuts it down and makes it dangerous to wildlife, uh, humans, pets. And so, um, this is an ongoing effort. We are having great success with the cleanup of this lake. All right, next slide. And just a quick update on Sixth Street. This is from Broadway Looking West. You'll notice today there was a pretty substantial lane shift. And so we're on the northern side now. The east-west, uh, lanes are on the north side of the street. And as you can see here, um, we're nearing completion. And the street paving of the water sewer and stormwater upgrades. And then the street paving, repaving will begin mid-August. And of course, that's, as you can see on the slide, pending weather and crew availability. And expect, just expect delays. And it's, it's gonna happen and respect the work being done and especially the workers in the zone. Uh, these are never safe areas for individuals to be working in. And so our, uh, appreciate and of course, council, I know you do too, the, uh, the diligence that the drivers, um, have to make sure that we safely get this project done. Next slide. Lulu Haddon. So we have a grand reopening. So, uh, and obviously this park is beautiful. I was just over there today. It's looking very good. And, um, a lot of fun happening next week. There's, uh, I mean, not next week, but I should say the upcoming Friday and starting at one P M. So I hope, I hope we get some folks out there to enjoy the ribbon cutting. Have some fun at a brand new jewel in the city of Bremerton. And that's it, council. That concludes my report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Next, I'll turn to our city clerk, Ms. Hoover, for the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Younger. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register. Approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers four-one-one-five-two-one through four-one-one-six-six-eight and E F T numbers V four-three-nine-four-zero through V four-four-zero-four-four and the grand total amount of three million four hundred ninety thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents. Regular payroll for pay period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one million one hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents. Three, regular payroll payout for the pay period ending June thirtieth in the amount of forty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-three cents. B, minutes of council meeting July second, twenty twenty-five. C, minutes of study session July ninth, twenty twenty-five. D, confirm reappointment of Chuck Henderson to the C D B G Project Review Committee. And E, confirm reappointment of Grace Crowley to the C D B G Project Review Committee. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. If any member of the public wishes to speak to on any of the consent agenda items, we only ask that you state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And said that, does any member of the public wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items?
Uh, just to make sure, is Henderson? Sorry. Jose Camacho, friends of Smith Cove. Rock the Block. I spazzed for a second. If Henderson is still on the consent agenda, this is what the common is for. It's concerning C D B G funding. Um, I am requesting that the city come to its senses. And anyone who is a past or current member of the Fourth Street Action Group be given a moratorium. Whatever the vehicle is, they should be barred from being part of the project review committee when it comes to C D B G funds because that is a HUD program intended for the needy. And if a realtor or broker, a developer of this caliber, the Wesley Larsens, the Steven Seagulls, the Steve Rice, they're all joint ventures, they're part of a cartel. When they insert themselves into the public process, which is intended for the needy, I don't know why we're supposed to keep a secret, a, a serious face and pretend like there will be a good result. There hasn't been a good result. We have just discovered that Sound West Group was directly given roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars or awarded two hundred and forty thousand dollars in HUD C D B G funds. Over the weekend, I saw comments from the cartel clique, the developer clique dismissing concerns by saying, well, we gave C D B G funds for revitalization. At the end of the day, any C D B G funding has to comply with the seventy percent rule. The overall benefit rule, the L M I test, whatever you want to call it. Things that are funded by C D B G funds should in the aggregate benefit seventy percent of citizens, residents who are low income. And HUD actually divides it up very finely. Very low income, low income, moderate, low, moderate, moderate. This is not a placing for developers or brokers or realtors. And that the city found a way, a gimmick, and I believe it was crooked. And of course, Andrew Spencer was involved. That the city did that is a disgrace. Especially because concurrently desperate people, the poorest of the poor, have been begging you guys right to your face, including members of the Fourth Street Action Group. And you guys pretend to care. You put on the empathy mask and nothing ever happens. So now we know Sound West Group benefited from funds for the needy. It's a different kind of theft.
Anyone else for public recognition? I mean, I'm sorry for the consent item. Uh, Mr. Sorenson, is there anyone online?
There is not.
All right. No further comment on consent agenda? Well, go ahead, please.
My name is Robin Weldon. Um, I will be reading a short section from an email sent to this council on June third, uh, twenty twenty-five. This was a day before the council voted unanimously to approve a twenty forty-four comprehensive, Bremerton Comprehensive Plan, despite evidence of corruption and market rate and luxury speculative developer favoritism from city officials and politicians that are embedded in the plan. Um.
Yeah, Ms. Weldon, is this have to do, can you tell me which item on consent agenda you're speaking to?
Am I not public? I just walked in the door.
Yeah, yeah, no, the public recognition's later. No, no worries.
But actually, one thing I would like to say. Um, I fully agree with what, um, Jose Camacho and Friends of Smith Cove, um, had to say here today. Um, complete agreement with it. I'd like to adopt and incorporate his comment as my own. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no one else for the consent agenda? Dave, has there been a pause here? Again, and no one online? All right. So I'll now close consent agenda and I'll ask the council for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Ravalowski?
abstained.
Good now?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries six yeses, one abstention.
Okay, hopefully I don't screw this up. Now we're gonna go to public recognition, right? All right. Next up is public recognition. As indicated on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda. If you had a chance to look at our agenda, there are no general business items, so this is your opportunity. This is not interactive and the council's here to listen to your concerns and questions. As a reminder, if you want to talk to or send an email to the council directly, you can reach us at city dot council at bremertonwa.gov. That's on the handout that I mentioned, uh, earlier this evening. Also a reminder that now it is election season. Please refrain from any comments on political campaigns or ballot measures. There'll be no comments accepted via Zoom tonight unless prior arrangements were made through our city clerk by calling three-six-zero-four-seven-three-five-three-two-three at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Ms. Hoover, were there any arrangements made?
There were none.
Thank you. Again, we only ask that you state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Also, we appreciate if you print it on the back. It's optional, but that way you can get it correct for the record. A timer system will be used so that everyone is treated fairly. With that, I now open up public recognition. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, my name is Diane Canifax. I am, um, co-founder and director of a nonprofit called Kitsap Animal Rescue and Education Care. For the last couple of years, I've been involved with the County Homeless and Housing Division on the co-shelter project that the county is doing in, uh, Port Orchard. Co-shelter being a shelter for homeless people that will allow pets. That's the term co-shelter that's being used. And we are now care, um, contracted with the county to do assessments and provide vaccinations for animals that are coming into the shelter. And we're contracted with Kitsap Rescue Mission to provide onsite pet services. Some of you hopefully have had the opportunity to see the facility. I'm here tonight to let you know of an opportunity for any agencies in the county that might be interested in co-sheltering. There is an agency called My Dog is My Home that is an international organization. I have left all of this information with Angela. Um, and we, Co-Care is going to be hosting an open forum for any agencies that would like to find out more about co-sheltering. On August seventh, we will have a member of the My Dog is My Home Agency from, um, Virginia coming over, um, to meet with people and ask questions, answer questions on how to mitigate the issues of being able to effectively, affordably and safely implement co-sheltering. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jocelyn with, uh, the Bremerton Prayer Walk and Rock the Block. Also, I also live in Bremerton and I love this city more than anything. I, um, am here. I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update on what I see on the streets and what I see in some of the most vulnerable community out here because the actions that you guys do here really affect other people. We've got my marine, for example, and I'm gonna keep bringing him up until we get him into rehab and we're really close, but we're missing some resources available, but, um, he's still on the streets. He's still getting turned away for different aspects of it. His leg is being one. He's gotta be on antibiotics, so he needs a respite. I understand we're coming up with some respite options right now and it can't come soon enough because there are a lot of people in vulnerable situations on the streets that are just getting pushed around. And so mainly it's so we don't see them. And that's one of the biggest problems that I have is because they already feel invisible. They already feel like they don't fit into this community. And the fact is, is that they're beautiful. And they deserve to be seen in whatever situation they're in because that's how we know how we can help. That's how we as a community know what we can do. And when they're pushed around and when they're treated poorly, they don't feel like they fit in. And so that's a big problem. I've got moms right now that are couch surfing with other families. Sometimes you've got two, three families under one roof so that these kids and these moms are not out on the street. We spoke a lot of, about the single parenting and how it's so difficult and how we need more resources. With recent budget cuts, people are even having more of daunting, uh, hope right now because of the fact that there's not a lot of resources and people are thinking that resources are gonna be cut. So they don't want to come off the street if they're just gonna get turned back out onto the street. Because that's what they've been seeing is this revolving door of hope to hopeless, to hope, to hopeless. And it gets exhausting to live in that kind of situation. So I would, I would really, the other thing is, is that we just saw with the opening of Quincy Square, how beautiful our downtown could be if we incorporated that beauty into other areas and welcomed everyone to use it. Those shades in the summertime, oh my goodness, so many people's skin would be saved if we can figure out how to do that. And I think we can. Porta potties down there. We've shown you that porta potties work. That's a basic human right and dignity. And so there's a lot of things that we can do. And I'm gonna continue to come here because people need to be treated with dignity and respect if they're gonna ever come out of the situations that they're in right now. So please put a moratorium on the enforcement so we can at least see what problem needs to be fixed instead of moving it around. Thank you.
My name is Cindy Nally and I'm here and I'm gonna turn the tables around. Instead of us coming here, go and tell we're blue in the face or purple. Isn't purple after blue? I'm gonna turn the three minutes, two fifty, back to you and I want whichever one wants to come, speak out loud face to face and tell us why you are failing us, giving us nothing that we asked for. Bam, start now. Why do you all just sit there and look at us and tell us to get online to get our answers or to come here and talk? I'm asking you, tell us, tell me why you are failing to do your duties. Hey, it's your minutes, your time. Show the community, show the town, show everybody how you, this is how you're gonna be treated.
So Ms., as I explained earlier, public recognition is an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's.
That's not what I asked. I asked, why are you not do- doing your jobs? Why, why, what is your excuse to give to the rich? Why is there some square down there? Why is there some square down there and not one porta potty? There, take the last two minutes to tell me, tell us all, tell the people that are watching on TV while you go bonus. Can you do that, please?
So no worries. Are you done with your public comment?
You're not, I'm not a, anybody else wanna skip around the two questions?
So again, Ms., you're not running.
It's my minutes. Unless you can answer my question, then that's it.
I, I don't.
Okay, next.
No, Ms., you, you address your comments or your questions of the council.
My comments are, can anybody out here, out there?
This is not designed to be interactive.
Interrupting me. This is my three minutes that I'm offering to give to anybody that wants to speak up and tell us why we have to come here over and over and ask for the same stuff. Minute seventeen. Get up. You are squatters. Get out of the chairs you sit in. You're not even answering the questions we want or giving us.
So again, this is not designed. This is not designed to be an interactive process.
Well, we're interacting, so you there failed your own rules. Anybody else wanna jump on that? Nobody.
So again, they have followed council rules and procedures.
Younger? Ravalowski? Coughlin? Chamberlain, Nannia? Who's gonna vote? You know, our votes aren't counted because why would we keep people like this? And you got thirty-nine seconds to somebody at least say something.
So there's no adding on, uh, if this, if she's done with her public comment? No, I don't believe so.
Why are you telling us what we can do when you don't even do what you're supposed to do?
Thank you. You got nine seconds.
I, I got nine seconds.
Okay, next speaker, please. Anyone else for public recognition?
Like to, um, I would like to, uh, agree with Cindy, adopt her comment. It, people are angry out here. You've been ignoring people for so long. People are dying out here. Um, people are losing their limbs because of the dehumanization that and the criminalization that you have shown our homeless community, our unhoused residents. And more and more of them are becoming unhoused every day because it is unaffordable to live here. And the reason it is unaffordable to live here is that you favor wealth-holding speculative developers like Wesley Arthur Larson the Third and Sound West Group. You do not serve us. You do not represent us. And she is right. I wish more people who are unhoused were able to come up here and speak, but they're too busy surviving, trying to survive. And you're making it really hard. And by the way, my name is Robin Weldon. And, um, I have, I, I have already started, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go. There's a quote that, um, Marwan Cameron sent an email the third of, of June. Um, he's got, he's the founder of Gather Together, Grow Together. And he wrote as a resident and community letter leader in Bremerton, "I have witnessed firsthand the impact of the city's uh, planning, planning policies and allocation of resources, and I am deeply concerned." The policies currently in place and proposed in the comp plan, um, which you guys already, uh, passed, um, reflect priorities and biases that do not align with the lived realities of many Bremertonians, particularly our unhoused neighbors, those with substance use disorders, working families struggling to afford housing and people who rely on public transportation. The letter speaks to affordable housing. Housing is a foundation for everything. Yet in Bremerton, it's increasingly out of reach for working families, seniors and young adults. Developers build for maximum profit, not for need. Some wealthy influential developers have disavowed actually building low-income housing, even while the city intervenes on their behalf to gift them with HUD C B D funds, the G, C D B G funds, and even while receiving the M F T Es and asking for other municipal and, and subsidies. Affordable housing is often affordable in name only based on metrics that don't reflect actual incomes in our community. Thank you.
So no worries. The council member asked me to remind the council. I'm I'm sorry, you're, you're actually impinging on Mr. Camacho's time. So please, ma'am, could you be respectful in this environment? All right, so she, she was making comments that we could hear comments in the back from the public. So out of respect for whoever's speaking, please keep your comments quiet, please. Mr. Camacho, you have the floor.
Jose Camacho, friends of Smith Cove, Rock the Block. Nothing that's going on in Bremerton. It's new. You guys, ninety-nine percent of you are the most cliche of cliches. It's actually sad. I'm the Puerto Rican father of some bra- bronze goddesses and the god. The boy is a marine chief warrant officer. And when I moved here, I have many layers of naivete I've overcome. I assumed as a Navy town, I would find people in positions of authority and power who understood honor. I see none of it here, even some Navy veterans. Uh, City Council Planning Commission, it's actually disturbing to me. There's a book, there's many books. The privatization of everything. When a government embraces private commercial interest. In this case, you guys actually do unique special things for Wesley Larson. That is actually the end of true democracy, true government, and we see it here. When you corporatize the truth, it's no longer truth. When you corporatize civic activities, civic events, it's no longer based on truth or even values. Quincy Square could have been something that wasn't harnessed. For me, it is. I would have loved to spend an idle weekend there. But with the knowledge of what went into it, it's quite tainted to me. When I know people have suffered immensely with Quincy Square attention, resources and funds specifically intended for them. So I have a minute. Because of this process, actual values are disappeared, subverted, corrupted. You guys are so astute and out of touch. When you use the face of an iconic black man and you use that as marketing, what happens? You forgot Judge Jones, his brother. The family of Quincy Jones could not move into Bremerton because they'd find no place to afford from back in the day when they were in Bremerton. Judge Jones' most meaningful case to him in an oral history is when he defended, as he puts it, the existence of a black elder who was afraid of becoming homeless by a developer city scheme to oust her from her property. The Cherry Creek Cherry Tree Tavern. It's a great anecdote. Read it. Get your values back.
I'm sorry, ma'am, ma'am, would you like to speak to the council? Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, would you like to speak to the council? Come to the podium, please. All right, go, go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Jo Walter. I'm speaking on something completely unexpected, just something personal. Um, I'm a citizen here and this is a platform to say stuff. So I want to talk about what my daughter needs. Um, my youngest daughter, severely disabled, um, has, I've just had to let her go into an adult family home. It's been very challenging. And it is not the best, um, placement for her. Um, I have a, a vision, a, a wish for her to be in another sort of arrangement. So, I'm on TV now, and all you people behind me are hearing this, so, and all of you. And, um, I'm hoping that someone might cross your path, who's gonna be the person that my daughter's looking for, so I'm using this moment. She needs to be either adopted or fostered, but for twenty-four-year-old people, they don't have programs like that. But there are people who have that sort of a intention. There are people who do fostering and who do adoption, but it doesn't pay. And when you're younger, there are foster programs, and that doesn't pay very much. But, um, there are programs for young people. So, she, at twenty-four, um, will be much better served in a family environment. Where she is right now, it's been very hard. I walked in recently, and she had a black eye, self-inflicted. Um, she has a hitting behavior that is so severe that she's made herself blind in one eye and nearly blind in the other. So, she needs to keep the, the eye that still sees well-protected. And so, she needs a special program of intervention to protect that vision. Um, and so, there is a program that isn't exactly called foster care, but there is a program where, um, an individual or a family who would like to care for her and make them part, make her part of their family, they can be well-compensated. They can earn a six-figure income with one day of respite. So, it's possible. It is not easy to find that person, but I'm dedicated to that. I want her to be in the, the best possible placement. So, I hope you'll all just keep it in mind if you meet a loving, caring family who might like to, um, include my daughter in their family. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walters. Anyone else for public recognition?
Hello, my name's Alden Bradford. Um, I recently learned that there is one respect in which Spokane is getting way ahead of us in terms of, um, civil rights. Two years ago, they passed a law banning the use of high-pitched noise makers in public spaces. It took a lot of work. It took several years of debate. They had to override a mayoral veto, but they got it done. For those who aren't aware, we have one of those at the ferry terminal, just a few blocks that away. And, gosh, it makes it a very unpleasant place to be, which is a shame, because it's one of our most beautiful public parks there, down at the Bard Walk. I think more people should be able to enjoy that space. But as is, anyone with hearing that extends into the range of above twenty thousand hertz, it's just not pleasant to be around there. It can be quite painful. Luckily, Spokane has done the work. They passed a law. It's working. People are taking down those alarms. We could just copy and paste their law. It'd save us a lot of effort. Um, so I'm grateful for their leadership. I hope that we can step up. It is within your power to pass such a law, and I hope you do. Thank you.
Hayle Breach District Five? I'm here again for the MFTE. I'm gonna be here for the MFTE. Um, I'm speaking about it every time until there's some sort of resolution as to figuring something out. I heard that Spyglass Hill got an extension for twelve years. So, for eight years, they've paid zero taxes on a building that is valued at twenty-two million dollars. They do pay two thousand dollars a year. I guess that's, it's actually seventeen sixty-five, my bad. Half of what I pay, thirty-six, I pay thirty-six hundred a year for a three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar. It's not worth three sixty. That's what it's valued at, but, um, I think that most of us are tired of subsidizing rich people. I am. I don't mind paying for school lunches. I don't mind paying for people that don't have houses to have a house. I don't mind paying for my roads. I don't pay for my li, my library, my schools. But when we have a multimillion-dollar building paying less than what I pay or less than what most people in Bremerton pay, it becomes a problem. The fact that it got approved for twelve more years after having the eight years, when I heard it, I wanted to vomit, because it's really gross. It's selfish. Um, it's very selfish. I guess that means that there are eighty units now, twenty percent of those units, which would be, um, sixteen units will be affordable, maybe affordable, because affordable in Bremerton is subjective. If somebody makes twenty-five dollars an hour, the rent there is eighteen, eighteen to twenty-one hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom. At twenty-five dollars an hour, that is more than fifty percent of your wages. Um, God forbid you had to buy toilet paper, groceries, or you wanted lights and heat on in your house. Probably not gonna happen. You could eat at mom's house, I guess, or you could eat at your friend's. I'm gonna add to that. I also watched the study session on last Wednesday before I went on vacation, and I got just a snippet of it. And there was, somebody brought up the fact that, um, you could add twenty dollars a year to our tabs, our car tabs, which is fine for me. I don't like it. But it's not fine for somebody that's living in their car. Um, it's not fine for somebody that is already paying sixty percent of their wages to rent. It's not fine for somebody that doesn't have an extra twenty dollars. Sales tax was brought up. Come on, man. Crazy, craziness. Um, I think that we can do better. I think that we've waited long enough for a toilet downtown. I think we've waited long enough for a, um, a, an outdoor shelter up on Oyster Bay. I think that everybody's waited long enough. Figure it out. Figure it out.
Hi, guys. How you doing? I'm Hope. I think you're having a great time today. So, it's a great sunny day. I've been enjoying a lot of the, the summer activities. So, I appreciate, uh, your guys' part and just, just everything that's, that's happened, um, uh, this season. So, good on you guys. Uh, one request particularly, um, I'm not sure if all you guys are on Facebook. I know some of you are. And, um, when I used to attend, um, and I'll address you Chair Rebolowsky's meetings, I found them very insightful and wonderful, and I don't think she has them anymore. I, I think, uh, Councilor Mockler had one previously. And, and I, if there is a way to make either an event, either in Facebook or somewhere, so I can get a reminder, that would be very helpful. And I'd, you know, I'd even share it with people that I know, because I know several people that, you know, like, like the professional interaction. Um, the only request, and I'm making this short, is that, um, and I'm not really familiar with parliamentary procedure, but I believe if, if there's a lot of interruptions in, um, a proceeding, that it's, it's a good idea to bring in Sergeant of Arms to bring back points of order back to the council and back, back to the minutes at hand. So, thanks for your time. Have a great day.
All right, last call for public recognition. If you have not spoken already. See none. I now close public recognition. And are gonna, we do not, I'm sorry, ma'am. I've closed-
Is that in the rules?
I'm sorry, I have closed public recognition.
Okay, so you're still not gonna answer to any of these?
Thank you. Now, I'll turn to our city clerk. Uh, we have no general business items.
Are her statements?
So, ma'am, would you please have a seat?
No, you don't. I'm part of this cast, uh, community.
You're being disruptive.
No.
Do we have any general business items?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll turn to our council reports. Dave, I think we have a, a first initial slide that belongs to all our council members. Could you put that up, please? It's this one that says Happy Pride. All right. So, council reports is an opportunity for council members to write an update on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events or recently attended or plan to attend, or to speak on any city-related topic. Since this is the last meeting of the month, we'll start to my far right to District Six. But before I turn over to Councilor Mockler, I'd like to remind everyone that's attending, this won't apply for virtuals for obvious reasons in a minute, have a piece of cake. This is a, uh, in celebration of pride, is provided by our resident baker, Councilmember Chamberlain, and I believe there's plenty of cake in the back room. So, please, it's for everyone, so please enjoy. With that, I will now turn to Councilor Mockler. Go ahead.
Thanks. First slide, please.
They put them backwards, so hold on just a second.
Okay. Okay, so, um, these are the Wright Creek Wetlands. Uh, the first slide is right behind the small retention pond. If you ever go to Pendergast Bark Park, this water on, on the left-hand side stretches all the way down, past, um, parallel to that big bark park area. Um, the photo on the right is just below the first dam. So, where, where a person, where I'm standing for the first photo, if I had fallen backwards, I would be in, inside the second photo. So, you can see that's quite a serious dam. Next slide, please. Um, and this is looking forward down to the next Beaver Dam on the left-hand side. And on the right-hand side is the open pool that is the last Beaver Dam um, in this series of Beaver Dams. These are basically acting as retention ponds, right? Like, the water surges down, the silt falls down to the, to the bottom. And so, when a huge storm surge comes, you don't get that really scouring flooding that you get from soil that's laden with silt. Um, it's a series of retention ponds that it would cost us millions of dollars to duplicate and quite a bit of money to maintain every year. These beavers are doing it for free. Um, they have thousands of years of expertise in doing this thing. And, um, this is why the Wright Creek Wetlands are our highest conservation priority, because not only flooding within the city of Bremerton, but flooding downstream, uh, would be a, quite a serious matter. Um, and would, it would cost money. I'm not going to talk at length about the wildlife corridor and the pollinators and the native plants that thrive there. I'm just gonna talk in engineering terms. Here we have something that is not costing us a dime. Um, protecting these series of wetlands is really important to the city of Bremerton. There, my next town hall, because I have town hall every month, except August, uh, will be focusing on building a Bremerton Environmental Coalition. So, I hope you can attend on September eighth. And let's start putting that together. What do you wanna protect? What do you wanna work on? Um, yeah. Next slide, please. Huh, well, there were three of these. There were, there we go. Okay, so the slide on the left, thank you, Mr. Sorenson. The slide on the left shows the burning behind the beautiful new playground. Slide on the right shows the, you know, just a close-up of it. And can you go back to the previous slide, please? Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. And here is a close-up. So, this is sort of a good news, bad news story. Bad news, fireworks, dry grass, bad. Uh, the good news is, I think this is a really Bremertonian story. The kid who set off these fireworks immediately turned himself in and confessed. That was the very first thing he did. Yeah, and, and so he called Parks, and Parks was able to call nine-one-one, so this all worked well. Um, so, we are hoping that this will be a little better by July twenty-fifth. And if it isn't, this gives us another shot at what we have, how precious it is, how fragile it is. Also, yay, finally, Lulu Hadn. Has electricity, Mr. Barker? Okay, well, it's got lots of things, and soon it will have electricity. Okay, next slide, please. Is that the end of it? My regular slides aren't there? Okay. Uh, so my next town hall is September eighth. I am taking August off because all of you do. My email is anna.mockler@bremertonwa.gov. Please shoot me an email if you have any questions about these issues or anything District Six. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member, good now. And I gotta, first of all, I need to apologize to Mr. Sorenson. So, these, uh, the slides were issued in order of District One on down, and we're actually going in the reverse direction. There's quite a few slides, so please have patience. Go ahead, councilor, good now.
All right, um, so, uh, Happy Pride. Um, and, uh, June is technically Pride Month, recognized. Uh, but, uh, for twenty-nine years, Kitsap has been having Pride in July, because Seattle does it on the anniversary of the Stonewall riots, and that was a few weeks ago. Uh, we had the Fourth of July weekend. Tacoma just had theirs last weekend. And this weekend, uh, is, uh, is Kitsap Pride. And like I said, it's, uh, it's the twenty-ninth year that we've done it. It's actually my twenty-seventh year. And, uh, this year, we're planning for six thousand people at the fairgrounds. We're at the soccer fields. They're known as Gordon Fields. So, kind of just past the, uh, the rodeo area and the main part of the fairgrounds, if you're coming off of, um, sort of log away. Uh, we've got over a hundred vendors. We've got a full stage of entertainment. We have, uh, Vicky Martinez, who was a native of the Northwest, but now has moved on to big cities. And, uh, but you might know her from The Voice or, uh, from, uh, Orange is the New Black, uh, where she also does some acting. And, um, uh, we've got some, uh, really great local, uh, queer, uh, young people bands. We've got performers. Uh, we have a really fun, uh, kicking off with a really fun, uh, kind of brass ensemble. Uh, and, um, anyways, it's gonna be a great day. Uh, we have, uh, about sixteen food vendors. We have, um, uh, lots, lots of things to do. We have a kind of a big, uh, beer garden. So, um, and then, um, we're kicking off the weekend with our final fundraiser, uh, for, uh, the weekend's Pride. And we're having, uh, a party on the USS Turner Joy with, uh, a DJ and some performers and some cocktails and things like that. So, if you can join us, you can go to, uh, kitsappride.org for that. And then we even wrap up with a, uh, drag brunch at the Minette Saloon on Sunday. I think there's some tickets available for the eleven o'clock show, which we thought was sold out, and we did a one o'clock show, and we expect that to sell out. So, if you're really interested in that, you should get tickets. But we hope to see you on, uh, Saturday at the fairgrounds. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Rebolowsky.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to announce that, um, any students, um, uh, ages kindergarten through six are invited to learn what the Bremerton Drill Team does. They get to actually participate in an event. Um, it's three nights, Wednesday, well, two nights, I'm sorry, Wednesday and Thursday, July twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And then Saturday, July twenty-sixth, they get to, um, march in the parade with the rest of the drill team. Costs forty-five dollars a person. And this slide will, it's up on the Union Hill Facebook page, but you'll be able to, um, get this information from bremertondrillteam@gmail.com. Next slide, please. So, I wanted to remind everybody, especially in the central part of Bremerton, that the force main, uh, sewer force main is being replaced, it, a portion of it. It had deteriorated very badly. And we're, the federal government gave us most of the money because this carries the sewage from- the federal government gave us most of the money because this carries the sewage from our shipyard. And a lot of other people too, but primarily the shipyard. So construction is going to begin any week now. They're just waiting on some paperwork to be signed in DC. There are going to be disruptions. There's going to be night work. If you live in a neighborhood close by where there's going to be noisy work, you will get a a flyer from our public work staff to let you know. And then I am not having a district meeting in August, but I'll be back in September. The easiest way to get notified is you can get on the city council email list and they do it by district. But if you want to be notified of all city council district events, you can also do that and that. You would email to city.council@ci.bremerton.wa.us. And that way you'll get an email notification of events a couple of weeks in advance. So my next district meeting will be in September. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kaufman.
Right, thank you, Council President. And as always, thank you to folks who come for public recognition and bring up issues. And especially those that are respectful and constructive and help us have good conversations on difficult subjects. So thank you. One in particular on the mosquito noise generator. I'm just going to look at the, the two directors that are in the room. Do we know who owns that? Yes or no? No, okay. Let's, let's look into that because I think first step is to identify who owns it and then who's in control of it. Then we can look at, look at a law, but I appreciate bringing that up. All right, rest of my report is music-based. So I've got a music theme tonight and the first slide is not a picture of my own face. Hey, first off, so reminding folks over in Evergreen Park, every Thursday, we have this awesome Bremerton Community Farmers Market. Not only are there produce stands, lots of arts and crafts, some pretty good bakeries there too, that you get some good cookies from. But also live music as well. So there's a band. And then we also have music on the other side of the bridge in my district. So they're just kicked off to live 10. And then, just checking my mic, my mic on and off. Okay, oh, here it goes. All right, test one, two. We got music, music. Artifacts online. I'll just keep speaking in the room here. Let's try this.
Testing.
We'll get cozy here. There we go. All right. Hey, I'm District Four now. All right. All right, we got music in Manette. There we go. Every Thursday as well, 6:30 to 8:30. So you can have back-to-back live music at the Farmers Market in Evergreen and then head over to Manette. All right, the next slide. I appreciate it. All right. I don't even know why I included a Pride slide because Michael, of course, would cover it. But just, yeah, just want to say coming out to Kitsap Pride on Saturday should be a great time. And as we have a loving Kitsap, we basically don't have just one Pride Month in June. We kind of got two. And I like to remind folks, you know, despite the origins, these days, I feel like Pride is just celebrating diversity of all kinds. Not only different orientations, but celebrating those who are neurodivergent, adults with disabilities, just embracing everybody for who they are and what makes them unique. So I really love that we're celebrating, we're celebrating Pride in this county and in this city. And my last slide is also music-based. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. I'll spare everybody my awful singing voice. But no, not only wishing Councilmember Michael Goodnow a happy birthday, I also want to just extend gratitude. I've done this in another year, but we've come very, very far in this country when it comes to Pride. And it is thanks to folks like Michael for working for literally decades to push for, for LGBTQ plus rights, for awareness, for education. And I would not be where I am without you, Michael. So I just want to say thank you. And you will always be the head, the head gay in Kitsap County. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Frye.
I don't have a report tonight, but I do want to say Happy Pride and Happy Birthday, of course, to Michael. I'm going to echo what everybody said. It's been said before, it'll be said again. You know, your tenacity with this series of events and the relationships that you've built. It's, it's been something that, that we in Kitsap are and should be very proud of. And it's in large part because of the efforts of Michael Goodnow and his leadership. So what a month. Happy Pride, Happy Birthday, Michael. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chamberlain.
They gave me a microphone, maybe so I could sing you Happy Birthday. Happy Birthday to you. I'm not going to do it. I'm sorry. We'll talk later about a potential karaoke meeting only. But I would like to take this opera, well, I think I have one slide, but here's the confusing thing about my slide. I think the cleanup is actually in Port Orchard this month. And so I haven't gotten confirmation, but I believe that they're due for a reporter. Once in a while, they leap. I don't know why. Port Orchard, I guess, needs support too. But the next cleanup in Bremerton after that will be August 16th. What I'd like to do is take my time and read a resolution to you. And this is Resolution Number 3383. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bremerton, Washington, supporting raising a Pride commemorative flag at the Norm Dick's Government Center and throughout Bremerton in support of the LGBTQ plus community in celebration of Pride events. And as a statement to the public that discrimination, harassment and harm to LGBTQ plus individuals is not acceptable and will not be tolerated. Whereas the City Hall for the City of Bremerton is located inside the Norm Dick's Government Center, a condominium. And whereas the Norm Dick's Government Center has flagpoles in front of the building and the flagpoles are controlled by the Board for the Condominium Association, which is comprised of unit owners. And whereas the City Council of the City of Bremerton supports the Association Board raising a Pride commemorative flag at the Norm Dick's Government Center and supports community members and businesses displaying their support of the LGBTQ plus community in celebration of Pride events. And as a statement to the public that discrimination, harassment and harm to LGBTQ plus individuals is not acceptable and will not be tolerated. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Bremerton, Washington, does hereby resolve as follows. Section one, the City Council supports the LGBTQ plus community and wants to demonstrate this support by advocating for the display of a Pride commemorative flag at Norm Dick's Government Center and affirming support for the community members and businesses who also display regalia in support of Pride. While final decision to raise a Pride commemorative flag at the Norm Dick's Government Center rests with the Board for the Condominium Association, the City requests display of a Pride commemorative flag during any or all of the following time periods every year. The month of June, when Pride is celebrated globally and/or June 28th through the end of the third weekend in July. June 28th is commemorated as Stonewall National Day to honor the Stonewall uprising, a pivotal event in the LGBTQ plus civil rights movement. And the third weekend in July is recognized locally as the annual Pride celebration in Kitsap County. Section two, upon passage, legislative staff will provide a copy of this resolution to the Board of the Association for consideration. The council president or designee is authorized to complete additional steps necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, including but not limited to completing request forms, writing letters or attending meetings. Section three, severability. If any one or more sections, subsections or sentences of this resolution are held to be unconstitutional or invalid, such decisions shall not affect the validity of the remaining portion of this resolution and the same shall remain in full force and effect. Section four, effective date, this resolution shall take effect and be in force immediately upon its passage. And this was passed by the City Council of the City of Bremerton, Washington, on the 26th day of June 2024. And this was put into effect with a unanimous vote by City Council members and myself as council president. And so we did not really receive any resolution to this resolution from the condominium board. We're still waiting to hear. I guess there was not a lot of momentum behind it. I'd like to see more momentum in the coming year. And I'd like to find out more about the condominium meetings and how we can be part of it. Council President, you are now designated according to our resolution to follow up on this. So I'm going to pass the buck to you. That is all. Thank you. Happy Pride. Thank you for coming out, everybody. Thank you for your words. I know that there's not a lot of places where you can come and share the issues that you have and be heard by the public. And I appreciate it. I know it can be really emotional to come and be part of this. I appreciate you. And just know that we are listening, even though sometimes we can't respond. We are here to listen during public comment. We can't, we're not empowered to comment back during that time. We're available by email. You can email city.council@ci.bremerton.wa.gov or you can, our names, oh, did I send someone? City.council@ Both work. Bremertonwa.gov also works in addition to ci.bremerton.wa.gov. Thank you for your time and let me take space. That is all. Have a wonderful, hopefully hydrated.
Okay, thank you. For my report, I just want to comment on this, these city council meetings never fail to surprise me. So looking at the consent agenda, I mentioned to someone in the public, I asked them if they're attending for a Boy Scout meeting because I'm familiar with Scouts. My son is an Eagle Scout. And for a merit badge, they have to come down to the city council and follow an issue and write a report. And I said, well, this council consent agenda, I don't think there's much to talk about. Well, you got, I won't say entertainment, but you got some live action tonight during public recognition. And I don't speak for the entire council, but I believe I know this council fairly well. We do value public recognition. That's why we put it really near the top, right after consent agenda, before general business. And I've got, we've got presenters that are getting paid on an hourly basis. We put the public in front of the general business items, and that's for a reason. This is evolved over time. I've been on the council for a long time. We used to have public recognition down. And the councils, I had to spring it up because of schedules. I see this Walter's kind of shaking her head. She remembers and she knows what's going on. Most of you are very respectful, but when we have instances tonight of a couple of occasions of not going to the podium and not talking to the council directly, but this kind of hostile action, that's something I'll have to review and discuss it with our city attorney on how to best address that. Because that's not acceptable behavior. And I think most of us agree that's not normal or appropriate public decorum for a meeting like this. At the same time, and I fully recognize and embrace everyone's First Amendment rights. To the best of my knowledge, not all city councils have public recognition. I know for a fact that this council will want to have public recognition. But for you to come up and say, this is my right. I get my three minutes. Please be careful. Let's all practice good decorum and preserve this right. That's not a threat. I want to keep public recognition and we're going to have to work on procedures to prevent what happened from happening tonight. That's, to me, that's not acceptable. That's not how you run a meeting. So maybe it's something I have to work on. I don't know. I'll reflect on it tonight and talk about it with the appropriate people tomorrow. Okay. A reminder that the next regular study session will be on Wednesday, July 23rd, beginning at 5:00 PM in the sixth floor council conference room with a remote option available by Zoom. And that concludes tonight's meeting, folks. Have a good evening.